All right, it's now six o'clock. I'll call tonight's school board meeting to order. Rule call has been taken and we'll go ahead and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, next up is to review, revise, and approve tonight's agenda. If there are no changes, is there a motion to approve the agenda as written? Moved by trustee Wake, second by vice chair of Garris. Any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing on all trustees in favor of approving the agenda as written, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Next up are to approve the regular board meeting minutes of March 25th, 2025. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Moved by trustee Wake, second by vice chair of Garris. Any public comment on this agenda item? All trustees in favor for approving the minutes of March 25th, 2025, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Next up is item five, which is our Community Connection. And we have the Missoula Education Foundation Executive Director Shannon Rinker here.
Hello, my name is Shannon Rinker and I'm the Executive Director of the Missoula Education Foundation. And we are incredibly grateful to be tonight's Community Connection. Prior to getting into my presentation, I just wanted to introduce myself a little further. I have with great privilege worked under Barbara Frank for the last two and a half years writing grants for the school district. And so I consider MCPS employees comrades, colleagues, mentors, and friends of mine. And I am oh so proud to be associated with this school district. Tonight, I'm hoping to give you a synopsis of what the Missoula Education Foundation does. I'll give a brief history of the organization, where we're at currently, and where we're hoping to expand. So our mission is to invest in MCPS educators and students so that all can succeed. This was, this organization actually was born out of MCPS trustees recognizing a need for increased funding for the school district. This came during nationwide budget cuts to do public education in 2007. At its first inception, it was volunteer-based and, and wasn't then, an executive director wasn't hired until 2017, but it has had continued growth ever since it was born. And we are able to be housed on admin campus. We're in the admin B building and we're very happy to be there. We have a true working board. Oh, thank you. And here's just a little bit of our recent history. So we had that hire, or in 2016, developed a MOU with MCPS in 2018, which allows us to be housed on the admin campus. And we, I just want to highlight in 2022, we hit a mark of giving over $250,000 worth of creative classroom grants to MCPS educators. Here is where I talk about that we have a true working board. It's a phenomenal group of trustees that come together and they volunteer throughout the year in our various initiatives. And they also have incredible talent and expertise that we are so lucky to have. And so I just wanted to list those for your reference there. And we also have a student board. Currently, they are small but mighty. And I have a picture of us this year giving out the High School Educator of the Year to Ashley House, who's Sentinel's Life Skills teacher. Faith Yu is our chair and she is present here tonight. We also have Leo Westenfelder and Jackson Mund. And the whole idea is that we bring together juniors and seniors to carry out initiatives that are under the umbrella of MEF, including Educator of the Year. But they have expanded. And I just might want to say that it's been a true joy to advise this student board and it's just a real, there's a real essence of the power of youth within these student leaders. And I will speak a little bit more about how they've expanded this year in their initiatives. So what we do is we have scholarships available. We have a couple award programs that we run, the Creative Classroom Grant Program, as well as we house a student board under our organization. And right now, what I'll do is I'll take the time to speak a little bit about each one of those initiatives. The first one up is scholarships. These scholarships are available for students that were one-time identified at risk for graduation, but they have persevered and seek post-secondary education somewhere in the state of Montana. We have two available scholarships for $1,000 each this year and those applications are active. They're due April 30th. Now on to the various awards that we hand out. Throughout this school year, we run the Educator of the Year program. And we elect one elementary, middle, and high school educator every single year to receive this award. It's a public nomination process. And at the end of it, those nominations are blinded and the student board reads through every single nomination and selects an outstanding teacher. We then go and surprise that teacher with a check for $1,000 and the prestigious Glass Apple Award. It's a wonderful way of shouting out educators that are doing such good work in our school district. But even the nomination process in itself is really lovely. We are in the middle of our elementary educator nomination process. And last I checked, there were 120 nominations that came in and there's still some time left. So Faith and the student board has their work cut out for them to read through all those wonderful nominations. And the other thing that we have actively going on is the most inspiring, we're preparing for the Most Inspiring Student Awards. Twenty-six kids are celebrated every year for this, this award ceremony. And we start at the middle school and level and each one kid per grade level, per school, all the way through high school is nominated as Most Inspiring Student. We are able to bring their families together for this awards banquet. They have a really lovely meal that they'll share together. And then they will go onstage to receive accolades from building leadership, receive a medal and a really lovely goodie bag. We've also last year started having a photo booth where the kids and their families are able to take as many pictures as they, as they want. They're printed out right there. So it's really celebratory and it's a time for MCPS leadership, school building leadership, students, their families, and community members to come together. We have 175 people attending this year. Next up is the Creative Classroom Grant Program. I just wanted to throw out a few statistics for you. Last year, the average award that was given to educators was $1,500 and we awarded 27 different educators. The application is currently open and that will be for funding projects that would take place in 2025-26 school year. And those funds are, will be available July, in July. We try to make it a low barrier application. We understand that educators are extremely busy. And so if there's any way that we can quicken the process for them to get these funds, we'd like to do that. So I think we've really hit a nice sweet spot with our application length. It's not too cumbersome. And to date, we have now given over $275,000 out. This is a list and this is not all of the projects that were funded last year, but just, just to give you an idea of, of what we try to aim for. And these projects are not otherwise funded. And so it's really an opportunity to just show our support for the innovation of our educators. And pictured here is, this was taken by the Missoulian and they did a piece on it, C.S. Porter's Book Vending Machine. And I actually, in preparation for this, pulled out a part of their application just so you could get a taste of what these, these grant applications sound like and read like. So this came from the C.S. Porter librarian. "Our book vending machine will make ownership of new books accessible to our students, helping them experience the benefits related to owning a book and having books in their homes. Reading for pleasure is also linked to improved academic achievement, fewer mental health problems, less screen time, and more sleep. All these benefits will directly impact the variety of academic needs our students have." And I just, I just want to share that the thoughtfulness of these projects that these educators present is, is just really impressive. And I think that if COVID proved anything as far as giving funding to teachers, they know exactly what to do with it. And so I'm just very pleased to be a part of an organization that's able to supply more funds for teachers. All right, and now it's time to elaborate on what the MEF student board has done this year. Every year, they run the Educator of the Year Awards. And like I said, they select the final person that will be surprised at those various grade bands. Also this year, they took upon a project, which is they designed a billboard that Stockman Bank is sponsoring. And they landed on, they wanted to remind people that teacher appreciation is coming up. And to watch them go through that process was just, it just spoke to how competent these student leaders are, how creative they are, and they're truly passionate about education. And that billboard is coming up very soon on Broadway Street, so I encourage you guys to look out for that. Finally, they're piloting a project that they titled the Apple Seed Project. And the idea is to focus on one school for the entire school year and do what they can to create enhanced learning opportunities for those students. They, they wrote a $3,000 grant to support, the, the first school up was Teach Academy. And, and I, again, it was just one of those moments, we, I have them pictured right here of them sitting in a coffee shop and just their minds coming together and, and doing what they can to support MCPS. If you couldn't tell that I've been mentored by Barbara Frank, maybe the fact that I have a logic model is proof right here. I decided to, that it was important for our organization as we look to expand, to develop a logic model. Not only would this be used when we are applying for larger grants, but it also just hones and focuses where we want to expand. And at this time, I invite all of you to be thought partners for our organization. I won't go through the details of, of all of the logic model, and this is a draft. But when we think about building capacity and expanding the organization, I want to make sure that we're very intentional about where we, where we expand. And so please, I encourage you to look through the logic model and I invite you to reach out if you'd like to meet to discuss further. And I am so appreciative of your time to share out what we're doing with this foundation. And I couldn't be more proud to be associated with it. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Shannon. We appreciate your work and efforts in supporting our staff and our students. So thanks. It's wonderful.
Okay, next up is public comment. We have received written correspondence, but now for the public comment portion of the meeting is set aside for the public to address the board as a body. It is not time for board response or for the public to ask questions. Do not infringe on right privacy of others. Please sign in and spell your first and last name. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. Chair or acting chair may interrupt or terminate an individual speaker if statements are out of order. Over three minutes are personally directed at an individual. Any public comment?
Yes, we have two people who would like to give public comment. Helen Moss.
Can you turn your mic on, please? The button under.
Hello? Yes? Hello, my name is Helen Moss and I am an ELL teacher at Porter Middle School. At the last meeting, my colleague spoke about an issue facing MCPS, the significant looming cuts in federal funding for the ELL program and the potentially disastrous impacts. I'm going to speak about the literacy levels within our ELL population and how the education and support we provide has a direct impact on the education levels they are able to achieve on their pathway to graduation and success. Most of the ELL students who have enrolled at Porter and Hellgate within the last few years have arrived as non-literate and semi-literate students. Non-literate students speak a language that has a written form, but they have not learned to read or write it themselves. Semi-literate students have some formal education and are able to read and write at an elementary level. For the non-literate and even the semi-literate students, especially if they are from a country that doesn't use the Roman alphabet, the learning involves so much more than what we think of as learning a language. It can involve how to hold a pencil, the most basic skills to operate a computer, learning which way to turn your paper. They may not recognize pictures used to represent objects and often our newcomers are not familiar with the cultural and behavioral expectations in the classroom and the school. It is overwhelming for the students, and not just the students, but their teachers. Specialized 45-minute classes with a teacher who is trained to teach ESL, where they learn basic math and literacy skills, are a necessity for these students' academic growth and their transition to life here. So many skills are taught and so many questions are answered within these classes. One ESL teacher cannot meet the needs of dozens of students, nor can mainstream teachers be expected to meet the high needs of these students in a classroom of 30. Yet this is what will happen without sufficient funding. For students learning a new language, it takes five to seven years to become fluent in the academic language. This may never happen if not given the necessary comprehensive support. Imagine learning your letters, phonics, basic reading skills, numbers, place value, addition and subtraction while your peers are learning genetics, figurative language, and pre-algebra. This is how it is for most of our newcomers at Porter. And unfortunately, the list that adds to their growing gap in knowledge and understanding continues to build throughout their years in school. I applaud MCPS for their early literacy programs, as literacy skills are an integral component of students' pathways to graduation and excellence. But what happens when those skills aren't developed for a significant and specific population? Let's not find out. I implore the board to keep funding consistent so our ELL students don't lose the support they need to ensure their success here in Missoula.
Thank you. That was three minutes.
And as future citizens of their new country.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Paul Stonebreaker.
Hello? My name's Paul Stonebreaker, S-T-O-N-E-B-R-A-K-E-R. I was here a couple weeks ago and spoke briefly. I'm only slightly more prepared today than I was then. But that ended up being good because had I been more prepared, I probably would have spoken with some misguided passion. I sat through the board meeting and was extremely impressed by everyone. All the trustees, Chairman Hill, Mr. McHugh. Just blown away by the job you guys did. Seemingly insurmountable problems and just the thought-provoking questions you guys asked in the face of that. And I arrived as maybe your typical caricature of a angry parent and left still angry, but not at you guys. So thank you, guys. Thanks for all you guys do and making a believer out of me. And also, Mr. Vern Befford, I think it was, gave an awesome report, which for some reason I found fascinating. So I thought it was great that you guys enlisted someone of his expertise. It seems like you guys are, have no, it seems like there's still a lot of difficult decisions ahead, but at least you guys have some great information to work through. All that said, I'm here to just reiterate what I tried to say last week. I know you guys have a lot of tough decisions ahead and I know you need to prepare for the worst-case scenarios. I know probably all your funding options are, you know, tough decisions for one party or another. But 38-year-old kids in a third-grade classroom, it seems like not something that should be on the table very often. So just asking you guys again to go back to the drawing board where you can and, and try to come up with as many options as possible to go over, but I certainly appreciate the work you guys do, so thank you.
Thank you, that's all.
All right, thank you for the public comment. Next up are reports and announcements. We'll do our student trustee reports. First up is Big Sky High School.
Hi, guys. I hope you guys are doing well. Today, I'm going to go over academics and I'm going to pass it to Silas to go over our athletics at Big Sky. To start off for our academics is our student body and class elections just concluded this morning, actually. And we announced our winners for the student body and class elections and we are very excited for you guys to meet who won next year. Along with that, our yearbook is getting submitted this Friday, which last year we got a national-level recognition award, and so we're really hoping to aim for that again. Along with that, our theater department just put on their last show. They had a very amazing turnout and they just were so impressed with the numbers and outstanding reviews they got. This Friday, our Health Science Academy ambassadors and key club members are attending Project Community Connect. For those who don't know what this event is, it's hosted by the local library. For those who need a little extra help, here our students will be working on food services, direction services, and helping manage parking. And our school is just very, very grateful to be able to pair with the Pavarolo Center to help make this possible. And lastly, for academics, is our art classes and our art club had the opportunity to have an art show this past weekend and it was a great turnout also.
All right, now time for athletics. The Big Sky baseball team is currently 2-2. This week, we play San Ignatians and Corvallis with a good opportunity to grow as a team and improve for a hopeful playoff run. Our tennis team had a successful day of matches on Saturday in Butte against Skyview and Senior, where the girls tied both Skyview and Senior 4-4 and the boys beat Senior 6-2. We've crossed out matches this week, today against Sentinel and Thursday against Sentinel and Hellgate. The first couple track meets have been going super well. They have, we've had a number of people pre-qualify for state, like the 4x4 and others. Lastly, our softball team is having an amazing season and we are hopeful for the future playoff.
All right, thank you, Big Sky. Next up is Hellgate High School.
Hello, everybody. I'm Stella Harvard and I'm the senior class president at Hellgate High School. And just a quick note, Faith had to go to practice at the Missoula Youth Symphony, so I'll be speaking for her today. But to start off, our student government introduced something that we do every year and it's called Flower Grams. And although we don't profit anything from it necessarily, we still think it's a really good way to increase school involvement and positivity. It's where you're able to buy, we work with bitter root flowers. You can buy a flower and leave a sweet note and then people in student government are able to like deliver them to kids throughout class. So it's just really, I don't know, just like really endearing to get to see like these students walking around with flowers all day. So it's a really fun thing where we get to see like our direct correlation that we made. And then also, we are getting to meet with the League of Women's Voters this Thursday, which we're really looking forward to. And we've had the opportunity to work with them quite a lot, so we're really excited to introduce them to more of our school. We also are hosting our mascot tryouts. Our mascot, we just fully finalized and we paid for through a fundraiser that was hosted through student government. So we have a lot of students excited about that. And we also have a teacher that was a college mascot, so we'll be working with him. Our spring sports are in full session, much like the other schools. Additionally, our National Honor Society also wrapped up and we finished all of our projects that were directly like helpful to our community. We also introduced the idea of senior breakfast and all of those sign-outs went up and also dates relating to all senior activities. Additionally, we also finalized all things related to prom, which is really exciting. And we also just had a missing work deadline, which allows students to stay caught up on their schoolwork, as well as a remote learning day tomorrow as our juniors battle the ACT. We are still working on a mural that was raised through money in student government and voted on. And we have a really fun correlation right now at the art club, who we don't normally get to meet with. And then finally, our school is performing Hades Town. Our theater department is absolutely amazing, but it's been really cool because our seniors in English were analyzing the text of Hades Town. So it just kind of allows like two different parts of our school to align with and it's not very often that you get to listen to music every day and count it as English class. So that's always a pro. But yes, thank you.
Thank you, Hellgate. Next up is Seeley Swan High School.
Hi, thank you so much for having me. I hope you guys can hear me all right. I'm going to be talking a little bit about our Destinations for Education program and a bit about our sports. So our Destination for Education travelers just returned home on Saturday from Costa Rica. The 17 students and three chaperones were in Costa Rica for 10 days. The group flew into San Jose, where they spent the night before traveling to a town on the Caribbean coast, where they spent four days hiking through a national park, biking to nearby towns, enjoying the beach, visiting a local reservation, and more. And they, they then traveled to Rosy, where for about five days, they stayed in pairs with host families, took Spanish lessons, volunteered at a local school, revamped the playground, just a bunch of incredible activities. It was really a truly incredible experience for our students. They learned so much, really engaged in the culture. All the stories I've heard so far was that it was the best time that they've ever had. They finally, yeah, they just finally came home and are so excited to share stories. It sounds incredible. And then a little bit about our sports. Our boys basketball team went to state for the first time in about 17 years and they tied for fifth, which we couldn't be prouder of. To wrap up the winter sports season, our booster club just hosted our annual banquet last night. The players received awards. One of our boys even received All-State, which is an incredible honor. And the coaches gave speeches thanking the players for this season and their hopes for the next. Our spring sports, track and golf, are off to a great start. The first meet, one of our juniors pre-qualified for the state tournament in javelin. We also have two athletes who will be representing our school at the upcoming Top 10 Meet, which is for, I believe, all of western Montana. So that's pretty awesome. And then golf had their first meet last week, where one of the golfers placed second and another placed 12. So just a few exciting things, but yeah, thank you so much for having me.
Thank you. Next up is Sentinel High School.
Our students taking Advanced Problems in Science recently competed at the Montana State Science Fair. As a group, they won second overall and we also had three students earn gold ribbons, which means that they scored in the top 10% of that round, moving them on to the second round. One of our students won third place overall and she will be able to compete at the International Science and Engineering Fair in Columbus, Ohio in May. The FWP recently donated a mountain lion to Sentinel that will be used in our biology classes. Sentinel math department on Pi Day set up a Pi Day station in the hall where they, like students could answer questions during lunch and then they would win a slice of pie. The Skills USA chapter that represents all three schools actually, won eight gold medals and one silver and one bronze medal at the state competition. They won a total of $65,000 in scholarships and also received a Chapter of Excellence Award. Our jazz band won the biggest jazz festival competition in Arizona. They beat over 20 schools and they were the very first band to earn a perfect score since the festival started in 2010. The MCTM, their MCTM Math Contest placed, our students placed top five both individually and on the group test. And then our robotics team has also had a lot of success lately and it's been super cool to see their work throughout the year. Our BPA students also have been facing a lot of success and we had 24 students make it to compete at the state level and then of those 14 qualified to attend Nationals. And then 10 of those members have decided to actually attend Nationals and they will And then ten of those members have decided to actually attend Nationals, and they will be participating in that in Orlando in May. And then this past week, our theater department performed "Once Upon a Mattress." It was a super fun and lighthearted musical take on The Princess and the Pea. It was also Sentinel's first musical since 2019, so it's definitely been a minute. Sentinel Key Club finished their last blood drive in March, and they had donated to them, I guess, or like to American Red Cross, thirty units of blood, so we're super excited about that. And then also coming up, we have a career fair that is highlighting local businesses, and so we're super excited to have students have the opportunity to learn about kind of some positions where they could work within the community. And then for sports, our baseball team is also two-and-two in their inaugural season. And then softball is feeling super strong. They have a really good community, as well as tennis, and they feel like there's been a lot of improvement this year, which they're super excited about. And then at track, we've already seen a lot of PRs, and we nominated our captains yesterday, and so we're super excited to start the season strong. Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you very much for your student reports. Next up, our announcements from the superintendent, so I'll turn it over to Superintendent Hill.
Thank you. I don't have a lot of announcements. Most of mine are going to be in Agenda Item Nine, where we'll talk a little bit about budget levy staffing. But I do want to share one other positive with our students. We got a phone call from a bus driver in New Orleans who called and left a message for Principal Miller at Hellgate to commend the students for just how well they represented our community. So he said, "I've been doing this for like thirty years. I've never really experienced anything like this." And so for someone who halfway across the country to take the time to call and say how amazing our kids are, I thought was just, like, that doesn't happen very often, so I thought that deserved a little bit of an announcement from the superintendent, so...
All right, next up is Item Eight, which is the Consent Agenda. There is no board discussion, as these are routine items. Is there a motion? It's elementary motion only. Is there a motion to approve the elementary consent agenda item? Moved by Trustee Witcher, seconded by Trustee Walsh. There is no board discussion, any public comment on this agenda item. Seeing on all elementary trustees in favor for approving the consent agenda item, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. So next up is new business, Item Nine, which is Finance, Operation, and Maintenance, and this is information only, and I'll go ahead and turn it back over to Superintendent Hill.
Thank you. So we have been going out, and I say "we," my team, Mr. Ladosky, Mr. McHugh, Mr. Jamona, Ms. Shattuck, myself, Ms. Savage, we have been going around to schools, presenting and sharing information about staffing, about budgets, levies. And as we talked about this with board leadership, we thought maybe this would be a good opportunity to kind of share what we're sharing with our community. We've also been going to PTA meetings. I actually had to cancel on one this afternoon. It was scheduled too closely, but last week, I think I did fifteen, and we're looking at like ten to fifteen this week and next week. So we're just trying to share the information, but I thought it would be helpful for the board to hear what we share, what we talk about. A lot of this information is known to the board, but not necessarily to our community, and so we thought we would take this opportunity to do that. So in the packet, I'm not following page numbers on a packet, but we're going to start with Trevor, and he's going to talk a little bit just about human resources and our processes through staffing.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent Hill. For those of you listening and watching, this is the best part of the presentation. But I should apologize to Ann. She did come and spend an hour with me and got the full presentation, so Ann, I apologize, you have to sit through at least one slide of this again. Must have been torture. Just a few things, just to mention that the wording on the right, where it says collective bargaining agreement, that's actually right out of the contract. And this is the order of things. This is the placement process. And in your CBA, you have a copy of the MEA/CBA if you haven't picked it up already. It's in your mailbox, but it's about nine pages. So this process is governed by three major things. The first thing is Montana Code. The second thing is the collective bargaining agreement. And the third thing is the Human Resource Manual. And that manual is a historical record of interpretation of the language. So not every situation is represented in the CBA, so oftentimes, we have to work with our union leadership and sit down and resolve issues. And when we make a stance on something, and we do it generally more than once, it becomes what's known as past practice and carries the same weight as the CBA. And I think that's a really important component for everybody to kind of wrap their brain around a little bit. I want to give you some dates that refer to those different steps, because oftentimes, I get questions, oddly enough, mostly from teachers, who ask about why certain things are happening, and it's in their collective bargaining agreement. So I'll just clarify a few things. I mentioned Montana Code, and that is because June one is the date in... Within the Montana Code, that allows school districts to non-renew any non-tenured teacher without cause up until that date. So if you recall, last year, we did pink slips. So we non-renewed all non-tenured teachers early on in the process. That is sort of like something that would come from the Department of the Redundancy Department, because we can already non-renew them. So what we're doing is we're notifying them with that. Why do we do that? So they can engage in the process that they've negotiated for, and so that they can also possibly look at jobs elsewhere. So we're notifying them early when we pink slip. This whole process is about that. It's about early notification. You're left with, you know, some things that you have to decide which would you rather defend, and I'll talk about that when we get through. So imagine June one, you're going to back up to leaves of absence. That's the first thing that happens. That's February fifteenth. So that's the deadline for anybody who's on a leave to notify the school district that they're going to return. If they don't notify us by then, it's considered a resignation. We do hunt them down, by the way. Retention's the new recruitment. Keep that in mind. Around the same time, February four is the spring count. That's not spring, but we still count people on February four. It takes us till about February twenty to sort out all the numbers and to have accurate information. So mid-February, we're talking enrollment conversations, enrollment, potential enrollment reductions. Unfortunately, we are a district that's not increasing in enrollment overall, so we are looking at reductions. The other date, where it says arena process, I get calls oftentimes from teachers. Why are you doing arenas in March? It's so silly. We don't have all the information. We don't know all the positions. And then I let them know that it's in their contract that arenas happen in March. So if you imagine leaves of absence to arena process, there's a lot that has to get done within a month. So it's a really frantic month, and also for the people who are directly impacted by this. It's a really hard period of time. All of this carries a, you know, a human weight to it. So the question becomes, why are there reductions early on? And the reason we do reductions early on is the same reason we do pink slipping. It's notification. It's early notification. We can lay off people in the middle of the summer. Reduction in force. We can do that if we want, at any time. That's not pleasant. It's not good to find out in the middle of July that you don't have a job. So the same thing goes here. We might have a more clear picture of the legislature and our budget in May, but if we have to lay people off in May, that's a horrible thing to do. So when I mention that you're left with an option of which thing would you rather defend, I will always err on the side of we're going to notify people as early as possible of the potential that they will not have a job. That's conservative staffing. When we start this process for enrollment, and we look around the district, we look at open seats, and we look at how well or how efficient we've been with our staffing. We're stewards of public funds. So this year, when we looked at K-5, for example, we noticed that we could essentially take all the kids from Franklin Elementary, disperse them across the district, and not have to add a teacher. So when you look at that from an HR lens, that's not super efficient. Can we do a little bit better? So when we look at numbers, we know what the accreditation numbers are by grade level, and I'm sure all of you know that. Micah, you might have a slide in here that shows that, and we'll talk about it. And everybody points to the numbers. What's important about K-5 is that nobody reads the bottom part. It says essentially you can go to five above. We never go to five above accreditation. But they give us the ability to do that with the help of overflow paras. So if the limit is twenty, and you go to twenty-one, that means you add an overflow para for one and a half hours a day for that one student. We don't have that very often. We have a slide that shows that. So when we do things conservatively and we cut early, we're notifying people so that they can participate in that process that begins February fifteenth and essentially wraps up by mid-March. So if we waited, they can't engage in that process. If we waited, they can't look for a job elsewhere. So it's a hard time during this time of the year. And every year, no matter what, people start looking at other departments. Why do we need a warehouse? Why do we need all these administrators? Why do we need coaches? That's the sad part of it. It pits people against people. So it's hard, but again, I will always defend that we do this early. We also know that people move. There's trans latency within our district. People move in and out of our district all the time. The numbers we have right now for enrollment for next year will change. I think you all know that. So when people ask, are we going to have thirty-one kids in a class? Well, we don't have thirty-one kids in a class this year, for example. So can we guarantee it? No, because the complete picture is not there. We don't know the budget. We don't... We haven't finished negotiations. There's a lot of things we just don't know. It's a process. It's a little bit of a waiting game, but there is a commitment to make every effort possible to have numbers below accreditation and to make sure that things are balanced across the district. And that's something that people oftentimes forget, is that we are, through the CBA, required to make every effort. We had a conversation about leveling in one of our meetings, and people say they don't like leveling. That is one of the efforts that we have to make at times, is to move kids. And that's partly to show that we're having relatively equal numbers around the district. So that's a little snapshot of where we are with this process. The components towards the bottom, I mentioned briefly reduction in staff. That's a whole other section within the CBA that you can reference. Layoff and recall, we went through that last year. We ended up with teachers in layoff status last year. So snapshot, I'm willing to take questions now. Micah, if you think it's appropriate? Yeah?
Trustee Witcher.
So you mentioned that we don't have any classroom sizes above thirty-one right now, but we do have thirty, correct?
Well, it depends on... I use thirty-one in reference to twenty-eight, where we have twenty-eight. So Micah will show you our high and low on a slide coming up, and we'll talk a little bit about that.
I just wanted to... Yeah, so there's... I think a lot of the emails that we've been getting, a lot of people are thinking that having classroom sizes over twenty-eight is new for this year. It's not. We currently have classrooms with more than twenty-eight children in them.
Some with twenty-nine.
Yeah. And they have overflow paras where appropriate, right? So just want to make that point. The other question that I have is with the FTE. So when I was reading through everything, it looks like with the budget that's being proposed right now, that we're going to lose seven FTE, and that's with the consolidation of those third and fourth-grade classrooms at Rattlesnake, Chief Charlo, and Paxson?
Lots of third grade across the district. And again, that's because of the switch from twenty students as a max in grade two, and suddenly you get to twenty-eight. I think it's more than that. I think there's four...
Chief Charlo, Rattlesnake, Lewis and Clark, Paxson.
Yeah, and then there's an addition at Lowell in that grade level.
Yeah, and then Lowell. So no Paxson. So question. Levies pass, Stars Act pass. We getting that FTE back?
That's part of the conversation with the Budget and Levy Committee, is what we do with the money if we have money left over.
But there's an if we have money left over, so we may not have money left over, even if levies pass and Stars Act pass. But it's a way that we can get to that.
That's correct, yeah.
And then it'll be up to the board and the Budget and Levy Committee to decide what to prioritize after talking with the union and the administration. Is it, hey, we've got X amount of money back. Do we want our teachers? Do we want lower classroom sizes? Blah, 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 if there's money left over.
Yep.
Okay.
Oftentimes, the issue is resolved just by mobility. So to give you an example, at Chief Charlo, and that's come up, and we've talked with staff up there about this, there's ten kids, I think, in the grade three next year that their homeschool is Jeanette Rankin. Two of those students are in extended resource, so they're not kids that would potentially move. But there are eight kids at that grade level that we can call up and say, would you like to go to your homeschool? So it begins that process, and we can resolve things without necessarily adding FTE. So the answer is not always just add. It oftentimes is moving students or offering people to go back to their homeschool.
We offer or we require?
We start with offer, yeah.
And why are kids going to out-of-district elementary schools besides if it's an SLP program or something like that?
Micah, how many do we have out of area?
We... So we have three hundred and thirty-eight students who currently attend a school outside of their zone school in MCPS. So the reasons for that, they could be students who are houseless. So we have students who fit FRC, Families in Transition. We have students who are center-based. We have the siblings of students who are center-based. We have parents who request, oh, I work here, it would be more convenient. My child, my older child goes to Sentinel, and it would make it more convenient if they could pick the kid up there. Like, there's a hundred reasons why someone might not be in their neighborhood school. Sometimes, it's because we've leveled. So another good example is last year, we added a kindergarten section at Russell, and then we had a late enrollment burst right before school started at Chief Charlo in kindergarten. We had seats at kindergarten at Russell. We weren't adding a teacher at Chief Charlo, so we moved ten kids to Russell. Now we're having that conversation about, would you like to go back?
So let me just elaborate on that example. That started because last year, we were cutting so many folks. We had a teacher at Chief Charlo who took a leave of absence. We made the choice, because they were very close in numbers, we made a choice not to fill that position so that we didn't have to cut another position somewhere else. So it was a one-year reprieve, basically.
Yeah, it all makes total sense to me. I just have one last question. If and when we are leveling kiddos, and I understand that that's a very scary word for our community, I think all this is very scary for our community, and I appreciate the work that you guys have all done to soften and give some of the reasons what some of our public comment was tonight, means that we're actually doing our job and explaining the why behind things. So when you do have to choose kids to level, how do you base it? Do you base it on neighborhood? Do you base it on when they enrolled? What their parents said they will do it?
I'm going to turn the Vinnie on this, because he's the lucky one.
Yeah, I get the good... I get the softballs. So as a group, when we're talking about leveling, as Micah said, there's a lot of different reasons as to why a student could be leveled. We don't typically look at a process where we're in the middle of the year and having a conversation about having to level that group out of their area school. What we're talking about is we may have a grade that's at capacity, right? We've reached our accreditation number and over, and we're going into the summer, and there's no room there. And a family moves into that school and into that grade. We would say, as of right now, we don't have space in this grade. We're at capacity plus our overflow, and we're going to level you to a sister school. When a space opens through attrition, family moves, a variety of reasons, we would do what we call a callback and say to the family, we have a spot open now in that classroom. Would you like to come back? To Micah's point, I think it's why you see pockets of students still out of area, because they may have gotten leveled, but we all know with our kids, they get situated, they get comfortable, they love the school they're in, they don't want to go back to their homeschool. And so we'll say, well, we try as best we can to take care of our families. If there's space at that school and you want to stay, we're happy to let you stay. The only caveat is we then wouldn't provide transportation if we were providing it when we level. When we level a student, we provide the bus scene, because it's not a result of a family choice. It's us as a district saying, we need to look at another option right now. And so that process continues and continues and is met with a lot of deadlines. And as Trevor said, the attendance piece and enrollment is one that we talk about every week. Every week, we get our report. Every week, we look at our staffing, and we look at our numbers at every building. And then we have a conversations with our principals, reminding them, please continue to look at your leveling log. Do you have openings in your building? Are you calling back families? And then if a family wants to stay, now they're engaged in that transfer request, and every spring, they'll put in a transfer request and say, I would love to stay at the school. We have a tight timeline with our principals that starts right about now, where every year, we have a discussion and look at all of the students in our building. They have a spreadsheet that notifies them, who in my building... They have a spreadsheet that notifies them, who in my building is in area, who in my building is out of area, and who in my building is out of district. They have a why as in notes, what they're there for, and then we send a letter home. So all of our families in our district that are out of area will be getting a letter sent out on April 15th that will say, we have received notice that you're out of area. Are you planning to attend your out-of-area school? Or are you interested going back to your homeschool if available? They have till May 12th to get back to us. Then we have a discussion on May 20th with our principals and say, these are the students in your building. To Trevor's point, we may have a bubble in a grade and say, we got to problem solve this. I know that you have families that want to stay, but we don't have the staffing to support that, and their homeschool does. So we need to treat those with caution. We need to have those authentic and real conversations with parents. We need to explain the why and try to get them back to their homeschool. That process will conclude, and families will be notified before the last day of school what school they'll be attending the following year. Over the summer, it's just me, the principals K-8 are out. So I will take any requests. I will track movement. I will track any attrition that we have, and then I'll monitor any new enrollment that comes into the district K-8, and we'll try to balance as best we can. So a great example would be a middle school. Two years ago for us, in the summer, they had, and I'm terrible at math, they had eight teachers, right, in middle school? And our process and the language that we've given you tonight, we go to 30 students typically in middle school per class, sometimes over based on various variables that we've talked about. We had 258 students for those 240 seats in the middle of summer. Now, you'd think it'd be panic, and what are we going to do, and we've got to add another teacher, but families move. Some families would prefer to go to a different middle school. Some families may be in a split household, and they were just coded wrong. There's a lot of things that happen over the summer, and typically, 95% of the time, this stuff plays out like we've seen over and over and over. Now, are there unique circumstances and one-offs and things that we don't foresee, and we need to navigate that and be thoughtful about the conversations that we have with families? Absolutely. But typically, this process plays out year in and year out. It just feels heavy and a little muddy because of the conversations we're having right now with Budget and Levy. And it just feels heavy on all of you. You're getting the emails. It feels, to Meg's point, it's scary for families. You pay to live in an area, you want to go to your neighborhood school. These aren't fun conversations, and we try to be thoughtful about those as we move forward.
Vice Chair of Gers.
So I have a question about kindergarten. So we make decisions on teachers in our elementary schools before kindergarten enrollment pretty much even starts. So how do, maybe it started, but we don't have a very good idea how many kindergarteners we have by the time we've made teacher decisions. So how do we decide that? What process do we go through? And if we miss it, how bad are we missing? And are we leveling because of decisions that we made poorly? Or are we leveling kindergarteners because there's more in an area than we just thought?
So it's a really good point. I would say the same goes for early literacy as well. So when we made these decisions, these enrollment-based decisions, we've left out kindergarten, and we've left out early literacy. So those haven't been looked at. Tomorrow, actually, we have a meeting with some folks here in the office that work with kindergarten registration, and we're going to start looking at the numbers and deciding, do we need to move teachers? Do we have, if we're adding early literacy classes, same thing we did last year, we might be able to offer some positions there to capture folks if numbers are down. But kindergarten's a frustrating one, because that goes all the way through August. Vinnie always says, we got to wait till we see the whites of the eyes. And it's true. People sign up. Different schools are more notorious than others for having late registration. We tend to leave some extra space in those schools, because we know that there might be higher rate of transancy there. It's a little bit more of a gamble. Kindergarten is more of a gamble. Early literacy is better, because we have a bit of an end to that, and then we can decide. It's a little bit easier, but kindergarten is still kind of funky.
And the one I would add, Jeff, is the one thing that kindergarten allows us is some historical context. We have a pretty good idea with enrollment and timing of what some of our schools are going to look like. They get a lot of heavy enrollment the first couple of weeks, and then they don't get much enrollment past that. We have other buildings where typically their flood of enrollment happens maybe one or two weeks before school starts. And so when you look at that through a 10-, 15-year lens, you have a pretty good idea, but as Trevor said, there's no perfect system. And then part of our process and thinking will be, well, let's think of best case, let's think of worst case, and we know where the ripple's going to come, if it's these numbers or if it's this. And we try to predict, but it's never perfect, for sure.
So just a quick follow-up question. You mentioned moving teachers around. So can we move teachers? So my question would be is, if we have 15 that we need to level from one school to the other, can we just move a teacher from this school to this one?
We can, yeah. We maintain managerial rights, and we can move people. There was, well, there is. So if you see administrative transfers, that's a period of time where we can do that on a more official level. It happens in summer. We might get a reduction in a school-based special ed program, for example. And we don't have enough students to warrant having the teachers there. We need the resources somewhere else. We'll move people. Same with kindergarten teachers, because the ultimate option we have is to lay them off. So we're avoiding that. And if we can offer them a job somewhere else, at least they have a job. This whole process really is based around retaining jobs and keeping people in buildings. It's really important, and that's been the work with the union over the last couple of years of these really hard times that we have. But with that being said, when I say we staff conservatively, we don't take the second grade numbers to third grade, you know, 20 to 28. We don't look at 28 as being the cap. We look at 31 being the cap, because we know we have attrition. We know we're in a period of time where we are seeing a decline, and we have historical records of people leaving throughout the summer or moving to different schools. So again, it comes down to that stewards of public funds and staffing efficiently.
Could I add just a little bit to that as well? That, you know, when we talk about, you know, let's just say, you know, not enough enrollment for kindergarten at this school, and you have a teacher who's been at that school for 10 years, and suddenly we're saying, hey, we're going to pull you out of this community, out of your colleagues, and put you in another school, a different environment. That's equally as hard on our staff when we have to do those things. Those are hard conversations, and that's part of why, when we start talking about these enrollment-based reductions and how this process impacts their lives, and that's why we see people upset and coming to our board meetings and saying, well, how can we do this? Why, you know, can we do that? But to your point, Jeff, we can, you know, if we're short on kindergarten, but we know what we're staffed to, and we have the ability to add a teacher back in, we always have that ability to do that. So that's the ebb and flow to all of this. While we represent on paper a reduction of seven enrollment-based positions, we're also adding in 4.4 FTE for enrollment shifts. So we see new enrollments at Lowell that is necessitating increases there. We're talking about early literacy. So, and again, we come back to it from the standpoint of, we're trying to save jobs as well. I mean, there's a, you know, we have people who, they've got new kids, and they just bought a house, and they've got all these other components that's their lives that are disrupted by this as well. So we're trying to be sensitive to all of it.
Trustee Gammel.
I was curious how much pupil transportation plays into the recommendations that you guys all have.
I think it's always a part of the conversation. Sometimes with the leveling process, it plays out. You don't, if we've stayed committed to too over in class size for a particular room, we have those discussions. It's funny, I was going back today and was thinking about, I might get asked tonight the question of how many kids we level and what's the busing cost. So I'm already a step ahead trying to get that number. I'll share it with you as a group. But it definitely is a part of it. Our transportation team would say it's one that we need to be mindful of, and I think the larger piece is to Micah's point of, we were committed two years ago of, if we can keep families in their area, we're going to do that, and we're going to absorb the costs with the overflow paras and not the busing side. And so that's helped, I think, keeping students there, but it definitely, we hit that cap and have to look at it. So it's a part of the equation.
Are there policies in place? Because earlier you spoke about if there was an opportunity for a kiddo who's currently not going in their district to go to their home district. Is there a policy in terms of transportation for that?
So if I'm, if, just to see if I'm hearing this right, if a student goes to a school out of their area?
Yeah, like if we had to level them previously?
Yep, yep. And we would be responsible for the transportation. And then if we had an opening and said, if I said, Kate, would you like to have your kiddo come back to their homeschool? And you said, no, Vinnie, you're crazy. My kid's happy here, they love it. That's the best teachers and principals, we're not going back. I would say, awesome, we're just going to make sure there's space, and then you have to provide the transportation. Yep.
Just since we're on the topic, I have a spreadsheet that I'm going to show you, and this is a spreadsheet that I keep. And what you see across the bottom are the dates. So every Wednesday, I get a report that shows me exactly how many students we have in our district by grade level, by school. I'm going to scroll down here, so you can see our high schools. Here's ninth grade. I have 989th graders, 1,013 10th graders, 961. So you see that at the bottom. And then across, you can see Big Sky has 10,065 students. Hellgate has 1165. I could actually make that a little bigger, I think. That might help for those of us heart of sight. Sealy, you look at Sealy, we have 84 students at Sealy. Usually, we run 25 to 26 students in a grade level at Sealy High School. So we're actually down a pretty good chunk there. But we, so we track at Willard, and numbers change all the time. So a great example is, Willard just had a graduation. They graduated 18 kids during the third quarter, one of the biggest groups so far. As soon as those kids have graduated, the principal there is grabbing these kids who are on the waiting list at other schools to get them plugged in where they can. So we watch this all year long. One of the things that I also do is I look at enrollment based on capacity. And we talk about capacity, which is a number that's arrived at by determining how many sections and how many students can you put in there. So in this case, in grade eight, I have seven sections at CS Porter of eighth grade. I can have up to 30 students in there, and I keep track of class size average across those sections. And so we can see from a capacity standpoint, based on the number of teachers, their middle schools are quite full. We're at 93% capacity at CS Porter. We're at 101% capacity at Meadow Hill, and we're at 96.67% capacity at Washington. But when we talk about that, one of the things that you have to keep in mind is this is the actual number of students in the grade level. They might be in a center-based program. They might be in something else that doesn't put them directly in a classroom, occupying a seat in the classroom. We do know that we have buildings and staff that try and push out, and we work on inclusionary practices with our students, but that's represented in there. And so we do the same thing across our schools and across the grade level. So I can follow Chief Charlo across, starting in early literacy, kindergarten, and we build in a capacity based on maximum class size by accreditation standard. And then I can track, and I can see I have two sections of kindergarten. My average is 21 and 1/2, because I have one section that has 21 and another one that has 22. So we're looking at this all the way through. And anywhere where you see a negative number, that indicates a section, a section or a class or multiple sections where there might be a student over in a particular grade level. The other thing I track, so sections is the number of teachers at that grade level. The difference is how many seats I have available at that particular grade level across the district. So, and I could spend a long time going through all of this, but it gives us some data that we look at just through a bigger lens. And I'm going to switch to this spreadsheet right here. So basically, what I'm representing here is, based on percent of capacity, where each of our schools sit and how many seats I have left. I have 325 open seats across our district in grades EL through five. So when Trevor talked about, we have, we could literally take all of the students at one of our elementary schools and redistribute them across our other schools and not have to add a teacher. Which is a very generic way of talking about what we look at from a district perspective. We've got 10 schools. Not everything lines up perfectly and beautifully, and you'll see that later on in the presentation. But it's just to point out that we look at this, we work through it all year long.
Vice Chair Walker.
I know that when, if we do go over a certain number, we do put in a para educator. But how quickly can that happen? Say, my family, when I was a kid, moved in with seven kids, and you, all of them are messing up your graph there. How fast can you or do you respond to the addition of one or two or three kids in a classroom?
Yeah, Vinnie could probably, or Trevor could probably answer this a little bit better.
Yeah, pretty rapidly. Most of the time, if it's one student over, that's an hour and a half a day. So usually, we look internally, and we look at our noon duties or some other folks who are already working there and offer them extra time.
You talked about students who are on paper but not necessarily in the classroom. Are they part of the accreditation, or is the accreditation actual bodies in the classroom?
They are part of the accreditation. They're listed on a teacher's roster, so they show up in that classroom roster, but they may not necessarily be in that teacher's classroom.
But they would trigger the para even if they're not there potentially?
Yep.
Yeah, and just to add to that, so sometimes we're more likely to add an overflow para is where that student is on that list, and we, but we know that they're in an extended resource room, for example. So we might be more apt to put that hour and a half para in there instead of adding another teacher because of that reality. And different schools, you know, have inclusive practices in different levels.
Vice Chair of Gers.
Just curious, and I wish Barbara was here for this question as well, but is this our best strategy? Like, being as close to maxing out our schools and seats as we possibly can? And I ask that question, because we know that we deal with behaviors across the schools. And we know that anywhere from 20% to 25% of our student body is on some sort of behavior plan or an IEP, or there's something there. So for every, you know, four or let's say, five students we add to a classroom, odds are that we're adding a behavior or adding something more to our teachers' workload. So is this our best strategy to optimize as big of classes as we can to state standards? Or is it better, from an educational standpoint, to find a happy medium to where we can have a little bit less behaviors in each classroom for our teachers? Maybe we get better education across the board. Superintendent Hill, you've mentioned multiple times, there's no statistics that correlate smaller class sizes with kids being better educated. It's having great teachers, which I'm confident we have across the school district. But if the teachers can't teach, then there's nobody's learning, right? So I guess that's my question, is what, is this the right strategy?
I'll try to answer that, Jeff. So during negotiations, I usually make a statement that says, you know, if the price of pickles goes up, McDonald's can raise the price of a burger. When the price of pickles goes up, we can't. We can't pass that cost on to anybody. But what I will say, because I think it's a great question, we go through this, we went through this process last year, and you can see where our capacities are. Our goal is not to pack classrooms. Our goal is to be, you know, smart with our money right now, because we know that there are other things coming, like negotiations. But it's also why we asked the question in the Budget Levy Committee to our unions. Would you like more support and lower class sizes or higher salaries? And it's not just on our union group, that's across the district. So no, I don't think anybody wants max classes, but what I want you to know is that we do this same process every year, and we don't end up with max classes in many places. So I just, is it the best way? You know, I let some other folks maybe chime in on that.
Yeah, I would say, just from a 30,000-foot operational view, if we're sitting at about 90% of capacity for the district, we're in good shape. And what you would see in a lot of what this spreadsheet is showing is, look at my numbers that I have, look at the number of seats I have in grade five. I have 101 seats in grade five. I have 76 in grade four. I have seventy-six in grade four. I have sixty-nine in grade three. Twenty-eight in grade two, and you can see we have a number of sections that are over. We're staffed really tight in grade two. Moving into grade three, so this is where we go from twenty to twenty-eight. So ideally, no, because one of the things that we're doing is we're building in some capacity to add enrollment, or to make shifts, or to do some other things. Keeping in mind, we have forty-six students K-five, E.L. through five, who are out of district. So I, I mean, literally, the board could say, we're not approving anybody to come in because this is what we're trying to do. But those forty-six students represent also a financial impact to our district as well. And so if we were to say those go away, so do more sc, I mean, it's just, it's that balance of how do you get to that right, appropriate class size, support the teachers with their, their challenges, and, um, and move forward. Yeah.
Trustee Witcher.
You're like the ultimate data guy. Mic up. Love the spreadsheets. Actually, I really like to look across the district where everything is. Let's talk about across the nation. What are our class sizes for K or E.L. five compared to the rest of the country? In other states, what about even the rest of the other districts? I know California's known for big classroom sizes.
Yeah, I think it, it varies, um, state to state. I think Montana's really fortunate that we've established accreditation, you know, sizes, and that they even consider going five over excessive. There are other states like Arizona, they'll pack forty kids into a classroom.
The other, the other piece I would add too is, is this is not a new phenomenon. We, we've, pre-COVID, when I was a principal at Charlo, there were times I had thirty-two kids in a room. And I was in the room, two thousand fifteen, sixteen, figuring out where I'm gonna put two more desks with a, a thrilled fifth-grade teacher that knew, uh, they were gonna do the best and they were gonna meet the needs of the kiddo. But I, but I say that, I, I think, I think there's so many other factors now, right? And there's, there's, this is such a, um, charged conversation, and we would echo everything a community member says that we want to have space in our classrooms. We, we would love for it to feel not as packed in our classroom. No one would argue that. There's just so many competing factors, and we're in a different space than we were ten years ago. But the, the process of leveling and overflows, that's existed in our district since I've been involved with K-five since two thousand eight, nine, ten. Um, it just feels different right now in these conversations because it looks like one versus the other, right? When it's been a natural process for us for over almost two decades.
Vice Chair of Garris.
Yeah, and I'd just say in response to that, in two thousand fifteen, we were on this trajectory. It's, in two thousand twenty-five, we're on this trajectory. So that's, I think, what inflames the conversation more.
Okay, I know we could probably have more questions. This is slide three, and the first two were introductory slides. Are you okay if I continue? Okay. Trevor did say he was the best part of the show, so.
Was that the best part?
No, Pat's coming up. Pat's coming up. So we've been talking about a number of things, and this has come through public comment and, and emails that you've got, and conversations that you're having. Uh, three big things going on, decreasing Title I, Title II. So that's having an impact with a recommendation coming out of our title group about FIT and FRC, and where the title budget is really only able to support academic intervention and not social interventions. Declining enrollment, K-five, third consecutive year, uh, that we've had declining enrollments. And high school for the first time since two thousand twenty. And then we talk about increasing costs. The costs of goods and services have increased beyond the three percent inflation that we get. This year alone, I think they're forecasting like a six point oh eight percent, um, and it's only April eighth. So a lot could be seen and, and happen in, in that amount of time. But I will tell you that our district has experienced way larger increases in inflationary costs, especially around things like property and liability insurance and utilities, like in the twenty percent plus range. So it's become a new norm for us. Title I and Title II, we're down about six hundred thousand over, uh, the last six years. So, um, people are like, well, why is that? Is the federal government giving us less money? The state of Montana gets the pie, and then we get a slice of it. We just get a smaller slice because we have declining enrollments, because we had a census, uh, that came out that showed that we did not have the, um, as high a percentage of students who qualify for free and reduced lunch. So those students were in poverty. Depleted reserves. So during the, the pandemic, when we were getting federal dollars, the, uh, federal government also said, well, you could, you used to have a limit on carryover. I think it was fifteen percent. And they said, well, because you don't, aren't able to spend all of that down, you can carry more over, so we were able to use, um, Esther dollars to help do that. So we've kicked this Title I, Title II can down the road, and the road has ended. There's no more road to kick this down. So we're in a tough spot. Resource dilution, my best example are, uh, urban high school. Big Sky is currently our, uh, Title I school. Hellgate will be a Title I school next year. So not only do I have decreasing resources as a whole, but now I'm gonna take the one title school that has really no difference in the number of students that it's serving in free and reduced lunch, and I'm splitting that resource between two high schools now. So Big Sky gets less, but they still have the same number. So these are things that are, are creating a, a challenge for us. Enrollment, um, K-five A and B. So A and B is the average number belonging. It's the number of students that you count in October, averaged with the number of students that you count in February, multiplied by one eighty-seven, which is the number of teacher contract days, and divided by a hundred and eighty. So A and B is an inflated enrollment number. What makes it difficult is when we actually look at the students and the counts. It doesn't tell you how many are halftime, how many are quarter time, how many are three-quarters time. It's just a number of bodies in, in your buildings. Uh, A and B is a much more stringent process, and if we miss by one over, if we overcount, we're gonna get a audit finding, and we're gonna have to send money back to the state, uh, if, if they, if we're found to be off. So it's a very technical, uh, piece. We start that process in, uh, the first Monday in February, and we have to conclude it, uh, by a certain date. I, I can't remember what the date was, but you got like three weeks? Ten days to get it all certified, which is a huge task for a district our size, when you're trying to make sure that you've counted all ninety-five hundred students in the district accurately. So you can see eighty-nine down in K-five, middle school up one, high school down fifty-seven. So graphically, this is what it looks like on the high school side. Two thousand twenty-two, we saw an incredible boom in our high school population, two hundred and thirty-seven students. The following year, eighty-four, the next year, forty, now we're down to, now we're down fifty-seven A and B. So the positive is anytime your enrollment grows, that's a funding increase. Because A and B is the number that we use to calculate our budget for the following year. So you'll see what this looks like as a, as an impact to the budget here in just a minute. Middle school, we're down a hundred and thirty-five students in a five-year span. We're up one, so we're counting that as a win this year. Elementary. Down three hundred and ninety-five students. In a five-year span. So to put perspective on that, um, uh, Rattlesnake Elementary has about four hundred students. So it's like in a five-year span of time, we have seen an evaporation of almost an entire elementary school worth of students out of our, out of our, out of our student population base. Add that to the hundred and thirty-five middle school students, that's five hundred and thirty students overall. That's a, that's a big number. So when we look at it, this was a, a, kind of a summary of our, um, enrollment in February. So this is my, um, uh, story problem for everybody. What happens when the low enrollments start to matriculate through grade level? So I have five hundred students in kindergarten right now. If you take five hundred divided by twenty, I need twenty-five teachers. I currently employ twenty-six across the district. And you can see the class size average, the low class size was sixteen point three, uh, the high was twenty-two. So you can see in all of our elementary schools, I have no class that's over thirty. There are some that are, that are higher than others, but in twenty-eight, twenty-nine, how many teachers will I need in fourth grade? When I can put twenty, twenty-eight students in a fourth-grade classroom? And I'll show you that on the next slide.
Vice Chair of Garris.
Just a quick question. We did the school tour of. What's that?
I'll call on you first.
When we did the school tour of Jeanette Rankin, I think it was last year, we went by their fourth grade. I think their fourth grade had thirty-something kids in it, because I remember the para pulling us in there and being like, look what thirty-some-odd kids looks like in a classroom. So has that changed now? They don't have a third, fourth, or fifth that's in the thirties?
They're, uh, right now, so this is a, an interesting thing. So look at third grade. So I have a school where the class size average is twenty point three in a third grade, and I have a school where the class size average is twenty-nine. So when you think about that third-grade teacher and what we're trying to solve for, when we say we will make every effort, which includes leveling, which includes all these other things, if I'm a third-grade teacher at that school with twenty-nine, I'm saying, I have nine, I have a third more students than one of my colleagues in a different school. Why? That doesn't feel fair. It doesn't feel equitable. It's, but the problem is, is I can't put a teacher in every building to make sure that everybody gets the same average. And we're trying to account for what our community wants, which is neighborhood schools, and they want their kid in their neighborhood school. So we say, look, you know, teacher X, um, we're gonna put you one over, we're gonna give you an overflow para, but we're doing that in part because we want to honor the fact that we try and support our families by keeping them in their neighborhood school, instead of saying, well, we're gonna try and level it perfectly. And that's why I say, like, nothing works out perfectly when we're talking these numbers. So even fourth grade, one, one class, uh, is nineteen, another one twenty-eight and a half. So it's, it's that problem that we're trying to solve for sometimes.
Trustee Witcher.
Well, and I think what, what you just said, we need to like shout that from the rooftops. Like, our community has shown us informally, informally, that they want their children to go to their neighborhood elementary school. They have shown us that that's what their priority is. You can't, we're not in a place right now where we can do and have small classroom sizes. So it's, it's how we're communicating that with a transparency, with kindness, patience, tolerance, and love to our community that like, if you want, or if you want your baby to go be able to walk to school and have a short bus ride, this is what we've gotta have to do, right? Like, for all the people listening out there in the interwebs world.
It's part of it. Um, Cohen, are you ready to answer the question? Yeah, I, I don't. Um, so what I put up there on the top is my enrollments for kindergarten right now. I have five hundred. I need twenty-five, uh, staff to cover five hundred kids at twenty kids per class. When those students matriculate to fourth grade in twenty-eight, twenty-nine, I only need eighteen teachers to cover that number of students. And with first grade, I have five hundred and three presently. Um, I would need seventeen, and I currently have twenty-six.
Is the demographers, are they predicting that our incoming kindergarten classes are gonna match where they're at now, though? Or do we have any clue?
I'm not sure. And, and, and part of it, like, when I was, um, trying to solve for, you know, what would it look like if we put all three hundred and thirty-eight students back in their home high school? What would our numbers look like, and how would they, they match out? They would actually be better if we could do that. And, but when we also look at it, the demographers are saying, well, here's what we expected the population in this school to be at this time. It's really hard to match that up because we actually have so many, like, there are eighty students at Paxton that don't live in Paxton's neighborhood. I don't wanna be the one to tell eighty parents, you're, you're going, like, I like my job, so. But, but part of this is to make sure that our community, that our, that you as a board understand, that our teachers understand that if we don't see some differences in enrollment, and someone said, well, you know, what's the likelihood that we're gonna see these numbers grow to six hundred? Not very. We don't see that kind of swing in our, in our enrollments where things just suddenly jump up. So it's a, it's just a reality for us right now.
Vice Chair Walker Andrews.
Yeah, I had a question about, as you said, enrollment is dropping. But do we have any clue? I think we talked about how it's not, it's not the case that people are pulling their kids out of our schools, um, because it's still, you know, ninety percent, ninety-three percent of kids. And then I've heard that it may be people like me who don't have kids anymore, aren't selling our houses and downsizing because these days downsizing is as expensive as staying where you are, um, in a bigger house, you know? I mean, do we have any idea?
Not really. Um, you know, when I, when you asked the question, I asked it at the Missoula Economic Partnership, uh, meeting, and what people would generally point to is housing. Housing is the number-one thing that is keeping young families from being able to be in Missoula. And it's not just happening here. When you look up and down the Bitterroot, and when you look out to Hellgate Elementary, and when you look out to Lolo, and you look out to these other outlying areas, it's just as expensive to live there now as it is in, in downtown Missoula. And so all of those things are, are compounding that. And we have more people moving here, you know, the population of Missoula has grown, but not with families with school-aged children. So what does that mean financially? So FY twenty-six, we're calculating A and B will be roughly sixty-five hundred dollars per student, uh, in the elementary district. And so that includes, um, E.L. through sixth grade. And so at eighty-nine students less, that's about half a million, a little over half a million dollars of reduced budget moving into next year, just for those students. And then another almost five hundred thousand on the high school side. I like to point out, fifty-seven students in our high school district, if you were to, I'll, don't do live math, but, um, if you take it over just the three, uh, urban high schools, and divide that number by three, and then divide it by the four grade levels of each high school, we're talking three or four students per grade level at each high school. So it doesn't feel impactful in the sense that, like, we have a bunch fewer kids, and so we need to make these reductions. We're only talking three or four kids in a grade level at each high school. So, but what it looks like from a revenue standpoint is almost half a million dollars. And so that's a, that's a tough one for us. Yeah, Cohen.
So why haven't we, we've heard a lot about elementary cuts and concerns. I haven't heard anything about high school. Is it, why?
Oh, Pat's gonna get to that here in a moment. So there is a positive, though, early literacy. We added early literacy. That's a hundred and sixty-five new A and B for next year, uh, that goes into our budget. So even though I represent that it's almost six, six hundred thousand dollar decrease, we're actually, we're gonna see an increase, and you'll see that through, uh, Pat's documents. But it represents almost a million dollars of, of new funding for us. And I'm looking to add three more sections for next year. Starz Act passes, I wanna add them. I know that we've got the enrollments right now to be able to support that. Um, it's just a matter of, do we have the funding to go with it? If you remember, last year, we added the early literacies, we added Jump Start. We asked the board to approve a million-dollar expenditure out of the, in our local agreement, so one time only, to kickstart that. We're really fortunate that we were able to do that. Not a lot of districts were. I did put in really small font up there. Um, I recognize that for a lot of our elementary teachers, they are not getting into elementary education to teach four-year-olds. It's a, it's a different ballgame. There's a reason why they're capped at eighteen, and that you have to have at least two adults, period, uh, once you're over ten. Um, it's, it's a different ballgame. However, uh, this is a place where we have jobs. Um, this is a place where we're helping to solve for some of the declining enrollments that we're seeing in the K-five. Uh, and we don't know what to expect into the future. And so it's, it creates some uncertainty, but, um, it's still a positive for us.
Trustee Mercer.
And just additionally, since Grace isn't here, anywhere to say, but it's also like the most impactful tie, right, like?
Oh, a hundred percent, yeah. I, I've talked a lot about that, that our ability to intervene in a student's life, starting at the age of four, is critical to their success, moving through those grade levels. And so there is a reason why the state finally said, yes, we will fund with A and B, uh, those programs. And so the ability to, uh, work with kids, to teach them how to do school, like, that's a big part of the process when you're that old. Um, you think one year is a quarter of their life. Um, so if they're five years old, twenty percent of their life is, is encapsulated in that one year. It's huge. Um, and then teaching phonemic awareness and numeracy, and how to share, and not hit, and all the things that we teach four-year-olds, uh, in, in our own families. So it's big. Increasing costs, uh, property and liability insurance, you're gonna see on Pat's spreadsheet, just for the elementary district, we're, we're looking at about a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars of increased cost. Far exceeds a three percent inflationary increase for just that one, those two line items. Uh, it's significant for us. We also know that we're looking at potentially increased health insurance for our staff. And so what bears the brunt of that? Our general fund. And then it becomes part of our negotiations. When we say we have money set aside to negotiate, it can't all be salary. We've gotta talk salary and benefits, and that's across all of our employees. Inflation, you know, the, the price of a dozen eggs, uh, I know it's expensive. the, the price of a dozen eggs, uh, I know it's expensive. Um, we experience those same things. The chairs, the desks, the paper, all the things that we buy, we are experiencing, uh, and we have to provide them, uh, we're experiencing that as well. And then the salary increases. We have an obligation to pay our employees the most that we can for the job that they are doing. And I'm going to editorialize a little bit later, uh, but, uh, that's part of it. So coming up next, uh, just real quickly, state funding formula. The state says, we're going to tell you what your maximum budget is. It is not based on how much property tax they collected from us. Your maximum budget is based on the number of students that you have. So it's a predetermined amount based on inflationary increases, and there's nine different things, but this is a really bird's eye view of, of what's going on. Then they say, here's what your minimum spend is for your district, and the state will provide that minimum, which is eighty percent. The other twenty percent have to come from locally voted levies. We are a very fortunate district that our community has supported our operational levies year after year after year. We're currently a hundred percent funded. The operational levies that we're running are to keep us at a hundred percent funded. Uh, and for our high school district, you'll see it's a very small number. Uh, it's a little bit larger in the elementary district, but in part because we have some increased enrollments with early literacy, and we're being, and we're able to apply some of those components to the funding formula. So that's where Pat's going to take off on this, uh, presentation, and he's going to talk, this is our document that we use with our budget levy committee. Yes?
Uh, just one question before Pat starts. That bill that, um, moves high school funding A and B to the, to the sixth grade, I think it is, how much of a help is that, if any?
Six hundred thousand.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. So, uh, this is the weeds. This is the numbers. And the budget levy committee looked at the, a, a version of this, and we have, uh, three columns, uh, in the elementary, um, slides here, uh, we'll show first. At, at the top, the three percent inflationary increase. As you know, there's like nine funding elements of the school funding formula. Those elements go up by three percent. The main elements are A and B related, student enrollment related. And, uh, so, um, the other moving piece that you guys know about is, uh, other than inflation, is enrollment. And so they sometimes work together, uh, really like in the elementary district, and sometimes they go opposite directions, like the high school districts. So in the elementary, um, if you look at the middle column, this is with the general fund levy, uh, we plug in the numbers, we calculate based upon those A and B counts, the, uh, maximum budget, which is reflected up above, uh, that's where we want to go. Uh, maximum budget of forty-five-four, that's with an over-based levy of three hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. And it's, it's those, um, very specific numbers because those are what get us to maximum budget under the funding formula. Um, the increase over last year is, uh, one point six million. This, uh, is much more favorable than last year, where we were looking at about four hundred thousand. Um, over a ten-year period of time, I looked at it maybe a little bit more, pulling out the, the low COVID period. We need to be about one point one million just to cover costs. So, uh, we're, we're in that, that, we're, we're well in that ballpark. And really, this, this reflects, as Micah mentioned, EL, A and B, um, Jump Start, A and B, um, Teach, A and B. So that's all built into this, this, these calculations. To the increase of one point six, we add two hundred and sixty thousand of retiree savings. That's presuming, uh, for each certified retiree, uh, we're estimating ten. I don't think we're there yet. But, uh, they would retire, and we would replace them with somebody who would make twenty thousand less. Simple sort of estimating that we're doing there, plus an additional twenty thousand on the classified retiree savings. The Stars Act is the far right column. That's the one point six million additional QEP, the Quality Educator Payment we would get with the passage of the Stars Act, which we think will happen. So when we look at this sheet, it's, it's our, our budget sheet. It's our revenue sheet, the increase that we have to work with of one point nine million and three point five million. So from there, we, uh, we look at, at staffing. Staffing is ninety percent of our elementary budget. We know we have contractual obligations for steps and lanes. Those are reflected up on the top half, um, along with the steps for MMCEO, and then a holdback for negotiations. Trevor mentioned that earlier. We still have negotiations, um, uh, with, with all of our staff. And, uh, so we, we plug in a, a number there, which is, uh, uh, then totals, uh, the, the four totals there, one point eight million, um, which, which takes a bite out of the dollars we were working with. And then we look at additional staff. Um, so, uh, within the elementary district, we contemplate three new EL programs. Um, as you guys know, we do the enrollment count the year before we get the funding. So if we add three new EL programs, we'd add them with Stars Act funds because we wouldn't have, uh, the students in place to count them, uh, until next year, uh, for the FY twenty-seven budget. So we'd add tho, those programs. Uh, and in addition to those, uh, we'd look to build into the budget the five EL programs we, the board approved for this year. Uh, we funded those with one-time-only money. That's five certified and seven paras that we need to build into the budget. The Teach Academy, that exists now, we need to build that into the budget. That's reflected up above. The Grant Specialist, this is a halftime position. We'd want to, we'd want to move from a grant funding to a, to a full general fund, uh, supported position. Jump Start, we get point two, five A and B, so a quarter A and B. Uh, this supports our summer, uh, program. Uh, I think it's a great program. There's twenty-five, twenty-four certified staff members, uh, six paras, and, and three aspiring principals that, uh, all are, are paid at, uh, a stipend to work, uh, six weeks, Micah. So, uh, um, and, and what's great is, it's a funded program. So, uh, we, the board supported that as a one-time-only, uh, startup for this past summer. Now it's, it's building that into the budget. Those, that, those A and B are reflected above, so it's, it's part of, uh, including the cost to go along with the revenue. And then additional four point four staff among the, the, um, our, uh, entire K-eight. Uh, so it's broken up to sixth grade, a couple point two adds at Lowell, and then I can't remember beyond that. Um, so with those staff additions, um, under the middle column with the general fund passing, we're to negative one point three, and we're to the good thirty-one thousand with the Stars Act in place. We have other obligations. Uh, Micah talked about utilities and liability insurance. Liability insurance, as Micah mentioned, has been on a, on a tear in terms of, uh, last five years, and, and so has, uh, utilities. Last year was the first time we actually boosted utility budgets. We had some, some cushion there. Um, and we're, we're evaluating both of those. These are based upon estimates tied to last year. So, um, we're in the process of, of refining those numbers. Um, uh, but we anticipate liability insurance will, will still, still be on the rise. The curriculum budget increase, this is, uh, we operate with a, a budget that's really been in place in the curriculum department for a lot of years, um, pre-COVID, uh, so, so I'd say ten-plus years. And what we've been purchasing, uh, curriculum materials with has been, uh, ESER funds, uh, partly, and, uh, also one-time-only funding sources. So this is trying to build those obligations into the budget, and it's, it, we don't just buy textbooks, we buy programs. We have sen, seven-year contract with Amplify. We had a five-year agreement with, with, um, Ready Math. We have an assessment contract, so it extends over a period of time. And it's, it's not comfortable having those contracts be subject to year-end funds. So, um, it's not just materials or curriculum, uh, it's curriculum development, so the cost of putting together curriculum teams, assessments, uh, software for that, materials that relate back to the, to the, um, to the Ready Math adoption, uh, even the summit we're trying to capture because that hasn't been a cost that we've, we've built into the budget. Um, then with all of those expenditures, we look at a net balance, and we're still in the, we grew the negative, uh, one point eight with the, just the general fund, and four eighty with general fund and, and the Stars Act. Um, the seven certified reductions tied to enrollment are reflected, along with, uh, reductions associated with admin centralized service, uh, restructure, and then the tuition levy. And this is the excess special ed costs levy for, uh, that's done in the tuition fund. It's, it's not revenue for the general fund, which is capped, but the revenue we, that we deposit in the tuition fund, we use to offset special ed costs, that frees up the general fund. And here, we had, we had boost five hundred and fifty thousand of excess sped levy, um, uh, really tied to the preschool program at Jefferson. We limited it to a hundred thousand if the Stars Act passes, just to preserve some funds for next year, anticipating being in a, in a similar spot. So we're to the good, uh, with the Stars Act in place, one ninety-one, um, which is, you know, good spot to be at, at this point in time. Uh, you'll see there's some blank spots up above. We didn't add for those, uh, federal program offsets, art teachers, permanent subs. Uh, you, you also notice we didn't add anything for just basic supplies. Um, you know, Micah talked about the inflation costs. Uh, we allocate a discretionary budget about twenty-five grand to our elementary schools. Not a lot, but that's what they use to buy paper, to buy materials. You know, those costs we know have gone up. Custodial supplies, we've just been picking those off where we can. And, uh, so we really try and focus on the big stuff at this point in time, and that's what's reflected up above. So that's the elementary. And the, the high school, um, you know, the, the Micah alluded to this earlier. This is a three percent inflationary increase to the funding components. Uh, the increase in budget here is four eighty-nine. That's a one point three percent increase. So even with the over-based levy passing, with the three percent to the inflation factor, to the funding factors, we're, we're going up one point three percent. Um, and that's the four eighty-nine. That's, that's, really the high school needs to be around nine hundred thousand, just looking over the past history. Uh, we have the retiree savings, and then the Stars Act. Uh, that's that million, too. The added column is for the safety levy, and as you know, that, like the tuition fund, that levy exists outside the general fund. Uh, here, we would capture new costs, much like we did last year with the elementary, and then we would also provide relief to the general fund of, of safety obligations. Um, so here we have a variety of, of net positives that we work with, uh, seven fifty to one point nine to two point nine, uh, million before we look at the staffing increases. Same, uh, similar increases for steps and lanes, and a holdback for negotiating pay increases beyond that. Um, then we have the, uh, Connect Academy, uh, Light the Teach Academy, building that program into our budget. Um, and, uh, the Grant Specialist, um, which is part of the point five, pretty small dollar amounts. And then the interventionist, four point five, uh, interventionist if the safety levy passes. This is the support, uh, that, that's put in place in the, uh, K, K-eight district that we had put in the high school with the safety levy funds. Um, and then our balance before we look at, uh, other obligations. Um, like the elementary, we'll, we'll focus, uh, and, on the liability and utilities, refine those numbers. Uh, the CRO, uh, SRO cost, uh, inflationary increase is reflected there. The SRO obligation, we'd move entirely out of the general fund if the safety levy passes, including this, this increase. Uh, student athletic and activity travel, um, and then the, um, then the curriculum budget increase on the, on the high school side. The add there is the school safety infrastructure. So this would, would, would be sort of a, a earmark. It, it doesn't get to the million dollars. The net amount is built into that, the one ninety at the bottom plus the one twenty-eight. That's the safety levy that would, that, that total amount, that three thirty would help, would be the additional safety levy amount that would help us balance in the general fund. Um, and like the elementary, we have the, the, enrollment-based reductions, uh, tuition levy, estimated increase. Our, uh, sped coordinators are working on that information for us. And then the restructure for admin and centralized services, the reduction associated with that. So the general fund and Stars has us at a negative one ninety. The elementary's at a plus one ninety. Um, that, that wouldn't require or call for any transfer funds, but what we did last year was we used more federal IDEA Part B funds in the, uh, elementary than the high school, so we could reverse some of that to balance today. But we, the board still has time to look at this through August. Um, and, and then in a positive spot with the safety levy in place. So then, the, the next slide, um, is, uh- You did, yeah. Right on.
Questions for Pat on-
Trustee Mercer.
Okay, I hope I got to take this right. So the Stars Act, I assume the funding then the following year is pretty consistent. It's not like it goes up again by a million, right? It's, it's a new pot of money, but then flat, yeah?
Yeah, it's new pot of money. It's thirty-seven hundred per QEP, which would be, go up by three percent like the other factors. Yep.
And then in order to keep getting it after some amount of years for something, we have to get to seventy percent of starting to five years. And we're at like sixty-seven percent now-ish or something?
Sixty-four.
Sixty-four. So although you didn't have a line for that, we have to pretty soon start baking money, using Stars money is not like free money. It needs to be allocated to that, or we will eventually reach a cliff where we lose it because we can't keep up. So we kind of got to start baking that in now, basically. So it's not all available for other uses. Is that fair?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's fair. I think it's, it'll, it'll factor into negotiations with MEA because, and, and we started that process last year. We, uh, we, we went from a two point oh something index from the low to the high to a one point nine four index. And by, by increasing dollars per cell as opposed to a percentage. And if you just put a percentage that, that sweeps through the matrix, you're going to maintain status quo. You're not going to make any progress. So, I mean, not divulging any, um, strategy here, but we have to, to keep working on that index. And the reason is just what you pointed. You can't, uh, do a one-year fix and then hope it's going to, you're going to fix it the next year. You got to really make that, that formula, and it, it's going to take more than one year to improve the matrix to make it self-functioning. Um, but, but really a, a good goal would be to get to seventy percent now, frankly. And we tried to do that last time to take advantage of the Teach Act, but it was, we couldn't. Uh, we got, uh, we did well. Uh, we went to forty-eight, or we went to forty-four, nine, but, uh, whatever.
I just wanted to add that with this, obviously, there's a push to get starting pay up. The reality is, is that that's very few employees. The majority of our, of our staff are at the higher end of, of the pay scale. So it's a bit of a balance, right? We want, we need to keep them, and we, we need to give them increases, but you also, you're, you're forced. Then that raises your average. So you've got to raise the bottom. You, you're just going to be chasing your tail. So in a sense, the state is, is dictating a negotiation strategy.
And part of that, and, and the School Boards Association has suggested language, which really is how you'd need to address it, honestly, where you, as, as Trevor mentioned, you have, you might have five people at the start of the salary schedule, and, and as people move across lanes, you, the average just changed on you. And so each year, we're going to have to look at each person and how they fit within the average. And as we have pockets of, of people, probably the very early people, if we're below that average, we just have to have language that says, it has to go up. And we have to agree to increase it to maintain compliance in order to get the, that, continue to get that QEP payment.
Trustee Walsh.
I just so appreciate all this information. I think it really clearly lays out how we're all on the same page with most of our community members. We all want the best experience possible within our budget. Um, you know, Pat, my question for you is the, um, that John Carlin bill with the special education preschool funding.
Oh, yeah.
Is that something that we anticipate might pass? Have we built it in at all?
Didn't build it in at all. It's one of the, yeah, Micah's got it right there.
Oh, great. Oh, there it is. Okay, good. Okay, wait, I have another- Wait, I have another question. I just saw that article today about St. Ignatius not receiving some of their federal funding that was supposed to hit in March. Have we, where are we at with our federal funding? Are we experiencing any delays?
Not that I'm aware of and not anticipating any. I wonder what program they had that.
Federal impact date.
Yeah, the impact date. Okay. And then I have one more question. This is for Trevor. That arena process, is that, the word arena, is that statewide or is that an MCPS word?
No, it's very much an MCPS word, not just for MEA, but also for MMCEO.
You know, it's just so Hunger Games. Is it, is that something maybe we could look at softening a bit? It just, especially last year, it just, I wonder if we could maybe talk about that.
I'd like to get rid of it completely. It's essentially an internal hiring fair. It provides people an opportunity to interview for a position, but these are folks that are already hired.
Really?
So it's sort of the Department of Redundancy Department.
Arena just feels like such a bloodbath.
I don't understand how principals do this many interviews at the end of the school year, like...
Well, and then you get the argument from principals that it's hard to really make an informed decision. So sometimes they're just not comfortable hiring anybody out of arenas because it's a, you know, it's a very quick interview and you've got 50 people potentially. This year it was very small because we didn't non-renew everybody. But last year was madness. So there are other options. We, we tried to, I tried last year to get that out and replace it with what we are also doing at the end of the arena process, is that after arenas, when there's a position that comes open, it opens within the building for a day, which is principal assignment. Anybody within the building can transfer. And then it goes two days in district. So this is also an opportunity. It doesn't guarantee everybody a full interview, but it does at least allow the folks within our district, which is a good thing, to apply for positions. To me, arenas are really not worth the time. And a lot of our language goes back to the closure of Roosevelt, to the closure of Rattlesnake Middle School. And, you know, I think it's really incumbent upon us in the negotiation process and together with the union to come up with something different. Yeah, good observation.
I confused Pat a little bit because I changed the order of slides and this slide used to say, or at least the one that I've presented to staff, positives for the budget. And I say that a little bit tongue-in-cheek. STARS Act, $52 million. You saw on the budget spreadsheets, no doubt that has an impact for MCPS and we're supportive of that. We want to see that pass. The caveat is that our legislature, our governor is going to stand and, you know, at a podium and tell us, we've done more for public education than we've ever done before. But what they aren't acknowledging is that this does not even come close to the inflationary increases that we've experienced as a district. When they've capped it at 3% and they've given less than 3% over the last eight years, we have fallen so far behind. Our state needs 140 million dollars, not 52. And so while we're grateful for those kinds of things, it really, it's hard. When you get to hear our staff come and talk about the impacts of, of what they're experiencing and when we're talking about how do we provide the best salary for people to have a livable wage in our community, and not just for our teachers, but for our paraprofessionals and for our food service workers and our secretaries and all the other people that are part of the backbone of this organization. So in some ways, you know, we take it, you know, we're appreciative of it, but it's a far cry from where we need to be. The inflationary increase on the majority of the funding components, the ones that matter the most to our budget, we don't get 3%. We get 80% of 3%. We get 2.4% of an increase. The other .6% is coming from our over-based levies, that other 20%. So it's baked into the formula. And, you know, like Pat talked about, I mean, we got, for the high school, we're going to see a 1.32% increase in our total maximum budget from last year to this year. So, you know, it's a positive. Other potential funding sources making their way through, so A and B for developmental preschool. Our developmental preschool, we received $57,000 of federal money. Bern pointed that out in his, but we spend 1.3 million to operate that program. We're required by law to do it. I think we would do it anyways. It's the right thing to do. We want to give our students a chance at a bright future. This bill still making its way through, but if we did, if we were to, if it were to be implemented today, most of our students don't even qualify for a quarter A and B because they don't go to school long enough. Bern pointed out, they spend more time on a bus than in the classroom. And so we would have to restructure our program in order to realize any financial benefit from that. But with that comes increased staffing, increased costs. So it's, you got to kind of weigh it out as it goes through. Funding sixth grade at a higher level, this started off at just funding it at the same rate as seventh and eighth grade, which is the high school rate. Most of the students in Montana attend sixth grade at a middle school and we provide electives and other opportunities for those students in a, in a schedule that allows for more of a pre-high school experience, but we fund it at the same rate as we would say kindergarten. And so initially, when this was proposed, it was going to be for that full amount. It would have been to $1.2 million for our district in the elementary budget alone. That would be significant. It's been whittled down, last I heard, it was down to half of that. So we're somewhere in between. So that'd still be 600,000, but the session isn't over. And so we may not even see any of these come to fruition at this point. English language learners, a funding increase. So Helen and I thought spoke very eloquently tonight about the challenges that we have for educating students who are learning English and let alone not literate in their own language, in their home language. And we receive in Title III, I didn't include this in our Title I and Title II stuff, but we receive over 14,000, just a little over $14,000 to educate over 200 ELL students in our district from the federal government. Montana is one of three states that doesn't fund English language learners. And so we had a local legislator who proposed a bill that we, for every dollar you receive federal, you would get 10 from the state. So that would mean $140,000 for our district. We can do something with $140,000. That might mean another teacher or two, or three or four more tutors. It's been whittled down to $2. So we're going to get, if this goes through, we're going to get a whopping $28,000 to educate 200 kids who don't read or write English or speak it. Against an expenditure of almost a million dollars is what we're, is what our spend is to do that. And so you hear about these competing interests and the things that are, that are going on for our district and people coming to our meetings and saying, well, what is it, smaller class sizes or do we help support the kids who don't speak English? Do we, like, where do we put these resources? Early literacy obviously has a huge implication for us and we're, we're the beneficiaries of that moving forward this year. So we have that 3% inflationary increase and we have that A and B increase because it's funding from the prior year. So that actually represents about a 3.65% increase for the elementary district from last year to this year. So again, that's a positive. There are some state taxing structure bills that are still working their way through. Some of them have been killed. There's a lot of politicking going on right now in the legislature, but even if we, you know, there's the potential that we could pass some levies and it actually would, our taxpayers would see a decrease in their taxes if the state is willing to make any of those changes. Some of the under-realized or over-realized budget projections. So everything that Pat put on those spreadsheets is, it's an iterative process, like we go back to it over and over and over again. He represents a savings in both the elementary and the high school district of $260,000 based on 10 retirements in each of the districts. If we get 20 retirements in each of the districts, it's double the amount that we have to work with. If we have half as many, it's half as much money to work with. So part of it is helping people to understand, like, nothing on this is set in stone as of right now. We have the ability to do that. So there are some things in there. We might have overestimated, say, utility increases by $2,000. So we will be able to get those numbers dialed in before we pass the budget in August. Question, Kate.
What kind of EFA funding do we get from the state? How much is it and how do we utilize it?
Yeah, so our Indian Education For All Funds and our American Indian Achievement Gap Funds are directed specifically to the staff that work in our Native American Student Services Department. So we employ a director, two instructional coaches and three specialists. And so we are putting all of those resources there. I think our, I don't know if I could tell you right offhand what that total amount was for, for this year.
And when we're talking about ELL, are we also, is that synonymous or glumped in also with our ESL kiddos?
Yes, English language learners and English as a second language would, it could be one and the same.
Yeah, I was just, the reason why that came up in my mind is a lot of our native students come in as ESL, so I was curious if some of that funding overlaps.
Yeah, it does.
I have those dollars, too. It's, it's about 225 in elementary district and 160 in the high school. 160,000.
The decennial study, so every year, every 10 years, the state legislature is required to do a decennial study looking at how they are funding public education in Montana. They are comprehensive, I'll say, but they are also in a position where, I'm trying to measure my words. They, in the last decennial study, they took, the legislature took very little notice of the, of what came out of that in the recommendations. And so what do school districts do? We sue. We sue the state because we're saying, look, you didn't keep pace with inflation. You have opportunities to act legislatively to address that concern. Our students are paying the price. Our taxpayers are paying the price. Our teachers are paying the price because we're not willing to step up and acknowledge that public education in Montana is a huge obligation. It represents about a third of the state's overall budget. Nobody's questioning that. But when we're falling that much farther behind and districts are having to cut programs and cut activities and cut teachers and increase class sizes, and on top of that, we're being asked to pay for more technology than ever before, we're asked to pay for student safety, we're asked to pay for all of these things that didn't exist when these budgets were conceived. And it's just becoming more and more difficult. And it puts our board in a tough spot. It puts our staff in a tough spot. Trevor talked about that, where people are pitted against each other, fighting for these resources. And how do you say that one thing is more important than another? How does one thing get a priority? How does one child prioritize over another? It's hard. So we're hopeful with the decennial study that the legislature will, will, will stand up, take note and do something about it. But there's legislation that's going through right now to, I'll just say, influence the makeup of the, of the group that will be doing the decennial study. To exclude voices like, I'll say, mine or school board trustees. To prevent them from being on there and being a voice and an advocate for public education. Sorry, I get on my soapbox a little bit. Pat, do you want to talk?
Yeah, so the board has seen this already, but we present it to the staff. We talk about what the, what the tax impact would be. And so on the elementary side, the over-based levy is 384, 947. It's calculated tax impact on an assessed market value home and, which is different than a fair market value evaluation. And we show it for the 100, 300, $600,000 homes. And at 100,000, it's 289 per, per year. And then you can just use, use that amount as a multiplier for whatever the assessed market value is. And then on the high school side, a smaller levy and a larger tax base, it's 67 cents on 100,000 assessed market value home. That's 67 cents per year. Makes sense. Our mill value in the high school district, I think, is $340,000. So it's, it's certainly less than a mill. And then the safety levy, also in the high school, larger district, larger tax base, $4.08 on 100,000 assessed market value home. And then you can just adjust, adjust from there.
So whenever we had the presentation about special ed related things, and it seemed like that would be some increased costs, some decreased costs, some increased revenue, but putting aside like the net of all that, what is the timeline for that? Is that stuff that we'll be considering for next school year or is that a longer range planning than that?
Yeah, no, we're looking at considering that for next school year.
Trustee Walsh.
Is there a world in which we pass all our levies, the legislature comes through for us, that some of these teachers that we're talking about reducing from some of these elementary schools aren't reduced this year? Because that second grade class is such a big bubble. Is there any world in which we can put off those reductions for one more year to make those class sizes not so big?
Yeah, there is, but a cost.
And is that cost, is that decision something that will be happening in discussions like with the union? Is that where that, what is that cost? Like, what is that trade-off?
Salary and benefits.
Okay, so, so it will, so some of the staff that are concerned, they'll have an opportunity to have a voice in that decision-making process of like smaller class sizes or higher wages?
We, we have that as part of the budget levy committee. So that, that committee's made up of union leadership, not necessarily, well, I guess it is union leadership, but not always just the president. It's made up of admins, it's made up of school board trustees, so that's the, that's the process. I mean, do we go around and ask everybody, who do they want to see get cut so they can get another teaching? No, we don't do that. Yeah, and I'm not sure that would be appropriate necessarily.
Trustee Mercer, then Vice Chair of GERS.
Well, question, so are you partly asking, though, in their union negotiations, as the union, the union has voice in how it wants to structure its contracts, right? Is part of what you're saying?
Yeah, just the, that kind of, is there a place for people to advocate for smaller class sizes? Maybe that is within the union contract or the CBA?
From my perspective, that's what happens in the budget levy. So when you're faced with all these different things and you get people that call you up and say, let's add more art teachers, great, at the expense of reducing class size? I mean, that was brought up last year, I think Jeff brought it up, you know, about, you know, we can put our money to reduce class size instead of this. And that's the kind of choice that, that goes back and forth. Again, our job is to, is to get to where we need to be without necessarily having to add, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
First off, thank you for this. This is, I mean, I'm hoping that people around the district, if they're not watching tonight, watch this in the next week or something. This clarifies a lot of questions that we're getting in emails. The one thing I would say about leveling, and this is my extremely humble opinion, is that we should have, when I first got on the board, we set a pretty strict policy about how you transfer between high schools because it was kind of a mess for a long time. You had a student athlete at this high school that went to this one because of, it was just a mess. So we put a stringent policy in place. And so I would encourage, instead of having 100 different ways of why we level or we let a kid go to one school over the other, that we take a hard look, maybe it's over the next year, maybe it's not, of a more strict policy about what is leveling? Why can somebody request a transfer and actually get it to a different school? And maybe we tighten, tighten that up because this is something, if our trend continues, is going to become a bigger and bigger problem, right? And so I think that's something that would help us in our discussions, give some clarity to the board and the administration when we're conveying to people why we're doing these things and what's happening in the future.
Trustee Witcher.
I forgot what I was going to ask. It's been a long day.
Any final questions or comments? Seeing none, any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none. Now we'll move on to personnel. Now we'll move on to personnel negotiations and policies and is to approve the personnel report. We'll have two motions, but I'll go ahead and turn it back over to Mr. Lebowski.
Thank you. Pretty standard report, nothing to add.
Any trustee questions? Seen none. Is there a motion to approve the elementary personnel report? Moved by Vice Chair of Gers, seconded by Trustee Walsh. Any final trustee comments? Any public comment? All elementary trustees in favor for approving the elementary personnel report? Please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all elementary trustees present. Is there a motion to approve the high school personnel report? Moved by Trustee Wake, seconded by Vice Chair Walker Andrews. Any final trustee comments? Any public comments? All trustees in favor for approving the high school personnel report? Please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Next up is to approve the Sealy Swan High School 2025-2026 calendar, and this is over to you, Mr. Lebowski.
Thanks. Yep, this is built off of the urban high school calendar, Mrs. Mr. Holmes' last calendar that he gets to create because he's retiring. So I'll try to answer any questions if you have them, but a little bit more difficult.
Trustee Walsh.
Is their spring break the same spring break as ours?
Yes.
Okay, so our spring break for next year is April, the first full week in April?
Yes.
Okay, excellent.
Any other trustee questions? Is there a motion from a high school trustee to approve the calendar? Moved by Vice Chair Walker Andrews, seconded by Trustee Gamo, Camille, sorry. Any final trustee comments? Any public comments? All trustees in favor for approving the Sealy Swan High School 2025-2026 calendar? Please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Next up is to approve the out-of-country travel request, and this is over to you, Assistant Superintendent Shattuck.
And I'm going to introduce Brendan Work, who's going to talk about the trip. Thanks for being patient.
Yes, thank you.
That was highly educational. Hellgates French, Spanish, and Arabic class, as well as the Arabic class I teach over at Sentinel, are hoping to travel for 16 days between March 28th and the new end of spring break 2026, April 11th or 12th, I think. I think it's going to be April 12th. Beginning in Marrakesh in southern Morocco and then going up through Spain and ending in Paris. There will be a four or five-day homestay component. We will be going through a trusted educational travel partner called Language and Friendship, with whom we traveled and did an identical trip, but in the, the other order, from France down to Morocco in 2023. So that trip was taken over the summer. A great success, no problems at all. This year, we hope to, or this current iteration, we'd like to do in the spring, just to save the kids from having to hang out with their teachers over the summer, maybe get some better weather too. And it will take up one week of instructional time right before spring break. The company, like I said, has highly developed safety protocols and the teachers with whom I'll be going, Katie Weiskaver and Milton Sheen and Barreto, both of us, or all three of us teach at Hellgate together and all three of us took the trip in 2023. So we know what we're doing, we're excited about the opportunity and happy to answer other questions.
Any questions from a trustee, Vice Chair Walker?
It probably says somewhere in here, but how many students are we imagining?
30.
And the only other question I had is whether we thought there could be any problems with so many changes coming back into the country? I mean, do we have students that, that are dual citizenship or anything of that sort?
I had not considered that question.
But you will.
Yeah, of course. It will have to be a major consideration in conversations with parents and potentially lawyers, but as far as I know, no students with dual citizenship are coming on the trip. Thanks for, that's an excellent point.
Any other trustee questions? Trustee Wake.
This is always my standard and Amy knows that. And I understand that these are not, these are seniors and juniors?
Yes.
I, I would really like you to be able to come back and tell the board what the trip was like for these students and have some of those students come back and tell us. And I know the seniors can't, but maybe the juniors can.
I'd love to.
Thank you.
I'd love to, yeah.
Any other trustee questions? Is there a high school board member to approve the high school requests? Moved by Trustee Wake, seconded by Vice Chair Walker Andrews. Any final trustee comments? Any public comments? All trustees in favor for approving the recommendation? Please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Item 10, which is Board of Trustees, and it's the Montana School Board Association update by Vice Chair Arlene Walker Andrews. Information only.
Right. I was actually going to talk a lot more about various bills that have either passed or on the agenda to be passed, but I think they were all mentioned. The 3% inflation increase, the changing to countywide base levies, et cetera. I just wanted to say that the Montana School Board Association advocates for a number of these and also opposes a great number of bills that have come forward. And I want to thank all the people on the board and also in our community who have written letters, testified, called, and done all the things that make it, can make a difference. There were two bills that were looking for vouchers and another one, a $1,200, $1,200 tax credit for people, for all sort of educational expenses that seem to have gone down. And then, as we said, there were a slew of them that have passed. And then there's a number of school tax items in front of the legislature right now. The other thing I wanted to mention is, I only discovered, just in the last couple of weeks, how much attorney-type legal services that MTSBA can provide, and I wondered if we are taking full advantage of that. And I think we need to discuss it at some point because I'm sure the things that we do pay for add up. And then the final thing I wanted to say is, we as board members can advocate and we are advocating for our levies. So I have with me today copies of a letter to the editor that we'd like to have, I'd like, we'd like to have appear about the same time that the ballots come out. And then a week before that time, a little bit longer, a 600-word op-ed, it's actually only 547 words, I believe, but op-ed that, that goes into a little more detail about it. So what I want to do is give these to all of you and ask you to let me know if they can be submitted on behalf of the board. And if you have any issues, like, I didn't speak quite as strongly as our administrator, perhaps, but every time I look at the fact that we're told, this is your budget and we're going to give you 80% of it and then you can go out and find the other 20%, I get pretty irritated. If you're going to tell us what our budget is, then give it to us. Don't play this game of, then you have to raise the rest. And I tried to say that nicely in the op-ed. Any questions about MTSBA?
Questions, comments? Seen none. Any public comments? Seen none. All right, the time is now 8:18 and we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.